This past week in the Almanac, this quote appeared.[39.11][39.11]"He who wants a rose must respect the thorn."[43.12][43.12](laughing) The author is a Persian proverb. Thank you. Madam?
At 11:00 a.m., Dr. Ellen Painter will have a presentation regarding the levy request. 11:15, there will be a public hearing on the CBVG-FY99 allocation in the city of Avon. And under resolutions number one, accepting the recommendation of the Community Improvement Corporation relative to the revenue bonds to assist malt properties limited, Avon, Ohio, in the financing of an industrial facility to be leased to Bearing Technologies Limited and MB Industries Incorporated.
Thank you. And I would like to call on Kathy Petrie from Squire Sanders and Dempsey, who is the county's legal counsel regarding this issue. And Kathy will introduce the speakers, and she will outline the issue that's before us.
Good morning, Commissioners. We have for you a preliminary resolution. In addition to the next issue, this project is a $40,000 bond issue for industrial facility that will be owned by Avon County Limited. The resolution will also authorize this agreement to set forth some of the conditions proceeding to the final issuance of the bonds. And we just had the need of the County Improvement Corporation certify that this project is in accordance with the county's plan for economic development. The purpose of the preliminary resolution is to preserve the borrower's ability to issue the bonds on a tax exempt basis, even if they should go ahead now and incur some expenditures before the bonds are finally authorized, and also to enable them to put in their application for the private activity bond volume cap limitation that they get through the Ohio Department of Development. I appear here several times a year. I typically am the county's counsel on bonds like industrial development bonds where you have-
Kathy, excuse me. Could you speak just a little louder? I'm not sure that microphone is on, is it? The people in the back are having a little difficulty during here.
I don't know. Let me just try to- I'll just talk louder. I'm sorry, I assumed it was on. But normally, I appear here several times a year as counsel to the county on conduit bond issues where the county is issuing bonds and loaning the proceeds to a private borrower, and often where another firm may be acting as bond counsel. I'm in the happy situation here where Squire Sanders and Dempsey is both issuer counsel and also bond counsel, in both cases with the county being our client. And so for more information regarding this project, I would like to turn the microphone over to my colleague, Bob Labus, who will be the one doing the vast majority of the work on the financing.
Good morning, Commissioners. As Kathy mentioned, my name is Bob Labus. Kathy and I are colleagues at Squire Sanders and Dempsey. And again, as she indicated, the resolution before the Commissioners at this point is to- it's- the request is for the Commissioners to adopt an inducement resolution whereby the Commissioners will agree that once the borrower has completed the structuring of the bond issue and negotiated all of the business terms and all of the documents have been drafted, then at that point in time, we will come back to the Commissioners and ask that the Commissioners give their final approval to the bond issue. In addition, federal tax law requires, and we follow the requirement, that there be a public hearing in connection with the issuance of this type of bond, and it is our common practice that that public hearing be held at the time that we come back for the final approval by the Commissioners, which we would anticipate being sometime later this spring after we've received the volume cap allocation. But as Kathy indicated, for both federal tax law purposes and for practical purposes of allowing the borrower to go forward, the companies to go forward with the planning for the bond issue and the construction of the facility, knowing that there will be a bond issue, we have the county adopt this preliminary resolution or inducement resolution. State law requires that the Community Improvement Corporation approve a project and make its recommendation of approval to the county Commissioners before the bonds are issued. And earlier today, the Community Improvement Corporation did approve the project, so we've taken care of that requirement that exists under state law. At this point in time, I would like to ask that Loslow Trommler, who is president of Bearing Technologies Limited, which is one of the two companies that will be occupying the facility, to describe for the benefit of the Commissioners a little bit about what the facility is, and speak for a moment to the timetable of when we expect construction to commence and when we expect it to be completed, and when we would anticipate seeing new jobs in Lorraine County as a result of this project.
As Bob had mentioned, my name is Loslow Trommler. What our two companies do, Bearing Technologies manufactures front-wheel-drive hub-and-bearing assemblies for sale to the automotive aftermarket. MB Industries, the other company involved, similar customer base, roughly different product line, more drivetrain components, again, in the bearing market, drive shaft support bearings specifically. We currently employ roughly 30 people, and we are looking to move those people and add jobs. As a matter of fact, we're projecting to double our employee base over the next three years. I believe our timetable is to break ground right around March 1st with project completion due by the end of October of this year. That summarizes things. If there's anything else.
Thank you. Does the Board have any questions?
I think for the benefit of the public, maybe you could let us know how many jobs are going to be new jobs, how many jobs you now have there?
We currently have 30 employees. Those will be moving with us, and we are looking to add another 30 over the next three years.
Thank you. And it was the recommendation of the Community Investment Corporation this morning that we, in fact, approved this preliminary resolution, our inducement resolution. If there are no further questions at the Board, I will so move. Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Vasey?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number two, job and family services bills? Also move.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vasey?
Aye.
Investments? So moved. Second. Discussion? Ms. Vasey?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Transfers? Mr. Martin, Domestic Relations is here to discuss the coverage of these issues.
David Martin, there were several transfers, account transfers from the Domestic Relations Department. I believe each Commissioner's received a copy of them. Mr. Rokus spoke to each of us yesterday. Apparently, these weren't received timely to have them incorporated into our board business. What is the issue, then? I'm sorry.
The issue, Commissioner, is the movement of accounts from particularly salaries into county gas professional services and that type of thing. Again, those communications are wrong. I think the issue is to particularly in January, 2001, explain these particular things.
Thank you, Mr. Rokus. Do you understand the questions that have been raised?
Yes, I do.
Good morning.
Good morning. As you may or may not know, through the Auditor's Office, there have been a number of new accounts set up that we had to move monies into before we could pay because they're of a more specific nature, such as utilities and some of the others that John has just mentioned. Our department's responsible for nine funds, 30 departments, with an average of 10 to 12 accounts per department before the addition of these new. Also, bills from mid-December through today are just sitting there because we can't pay for utilities out of accounts we used to pay for them last year. The reason for using salaries to transfer the money is only a temporary arrangement. It has no bearing whatsoever on whether we have or appropriated too much for salaries or, as another concern was then expressed, is that we'd be coming back later in the year for more salary money. This is strictly a temporary arrangement so that we could get some monies put into particular utilities. We, as you are well aware, we have a number of juvenile facilities. We don't particularly care for having utilities set off at that- those facilities. So again, it was strictly a matter of timeliness and knowing that salary accounts have by far the highest amount of appropriation. And even if there were to be a problem that would not- I don't believe any of those transfers would even be enough to make a difference one way or the other for one pay out of the whole year, and then we're talking late December. So it was strictly a matter when I knew that we had, well, I thought we had until this past Monday at noon, and then there was a new memo coming out that all transfers had to be in by Thursday of last week to make this meeting. And again, because of the number of departments and accounts that need to be funded and working on that time deadline, all I tried to do was get the money in there, knowing as it- I had probably before you today, there's probably a good 50 transfers that made it in time, and then I had another 17 on Friday that, you know, won't come before until next week. And again, the rationale is the same. It's no reflection whatsoever on the- our payroll. As a matter of fact, I don't even know what our new payroll is until yesterday afternoon because we just-
Has this been corrected, then, basically? Are you telling me that this has been corrected? I think John tried to explain it to me yesterday. Is that correct, John?
Yes. It's not so much a matter of correction, Commissioner, as I think of Mr. Martin reconciling his books-
Right.
-and getting all the accounts in order due to the time constraints.
Correct.
How long will that take?
To get the money back into the salaries?
No, 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 to get your books in order.
Well, this- that was a totally separate issue. Just one of the things that came up is that I have not yet balanced my- well, again, keep in mind that most of my accounts are grant-related. Except for the ones that needed balance for December to get money in January, I still haven't finished balancing my December accounts for a number of the grants. There's just a whole lot of work to do, and this all came up real quick. These accounts weren't in existence at the time the original budget, you know, was sent to you in May or June.
Are there other questions for Mr. Martin?
It was my understanding that the Board was concerned that when these things happen like this, if you transfer money at the beginning of the year, that later on in the year that the departments would come back and say they have insufficient funds in these accounts and request additional appropriations. And I think this was our concern.
I have not had an opportunity to analyze the budget. As a matter of the wording on some of those transfers is temporary adjustments, including salaries, pending reevaluation of the DR budget. I'm fairly convinced, having very little time, that I've had looked at all of them because of the number of departments we have, that we'll have sufficient funds. But I'm- all I'm saying is that the reason for these transfers at this time had absolutely no relation to payroll issues, per se, other than getting money in so we could pay bills. And that's all I can say.
Does the Board have other questions?
I have none.
Are we prepared to approve these transfers, then, as part of our item number five?
Yes, I am.
Are you making that a motion, then, Commissioner Vasey?
I'll move to approve item number five, transfers, and include this.
Thank you.
There's more than one here.
Ms. Vasey?
We discuss?
It's been moved and seconded that the transfers outlined in number five, including those that Mr. Martin has addressed this morning, be approved.
Okay. So just so this doesn't happen in the future, this should be corrected in a timeframe. Is there a timeframe?
Well, now the accounts are set up. There were certain accounts that even weren't set up until last week.
I know. I just don't think you want to come here every week doing this, do you?
No, certainly not.
Okay. That's all. I was just asking.
Oh, we like the pleasure of a good day.
Okay. I'll do it again next time.
No, thank you.
No, don't do that. Just come.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk? Ms. Vasey?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Advances? Were there any?
I don't remember seeing any.
There wasn't.
Okay.
I'm sorry, there were no advances.
Thank you, John. Okay. Requisitions? Also move?
I'll second, but I would like to hold 208-01, and that is appropriating $50,000 to the County General Health Department. The solid waste department is supposed to get reports when we appropriate this money, and it's my understanding that we haven't received one from the Health Department yet, this particular Health Department.
Is this Lorraine County or Lorraine City?
Lorraine County General Health Department. We've received the two from both cities, Lorraine and Illyria, but we haven't received the one from the General Health Department yet.
Mr. Billman, can you comment on this for the Board, please?
Dan Billman, B-I-L-L-M-A-N. You are correct that we do not have the Lorraine County Health Department. It isn't due until the 31st, and I'm sure that it will be in, but the other two are in already.
It's due the 31st of January?
Right.
Is there a correlation between these two items?
Yes.
I mean, the payment of the money out and the receipt of the report?
Well, we normally don't give them the money until they submit the report from last year. That's been the normal procedure.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, the thing is, you want to know what they've done with the $50,000 that we gave them last year before we give them another $50,000.
If we don't pay them until they give the report, who sent the requisition up?
If they don't?
If we don't pay them until the report is in hand, who sent the requisition up to us?
I guess the question is-
Well, we'd send it up.
Why was the requisition sent up without the report if that's a requirement?
Right. We'd never send up the requisition until the report's in.
Then how did we get the requisition?
You know, because we're anticipating that it's going to come in.
I see.
I think the message is, in the future, don't send the requisition up until the report has been received. Then we wouldn't be discussing this, correct?
I'm just asking that it be held.
Okay. Is that your recommendation, Mr. Billman? That we hold the money until the report is received?
That's normally what we've done in the past, and that's what I would recommend to do now.
And will you contact the Health District and advise them of that?
Yes, they pretty much know.
Well, apparently, they don't because they haven't sent the report.
Well, this has happened in the past with that Health Department also. I've got a letter in there from Andy Anderson stating that they refused to send a report at one time. So that's why I'm questioning this. I think we need an itemized account of what that money is used for and not just continually give $50,000 a year.
I believe it's part of the plan that these monies are allocated.
Yes.
Does the plan require them to submit a detailed report? What does the plan require them to submit?
It requires them to submit a report every year on what they've done the past year.
Okay.
Some Health District, well, Illyria sends theirs in very detailed. Lorraine is more detail- or less detailed, and Lorraine County is less detailed than that. But Illyria's really is line item. I mean, every time they go out on an issue to check a facility, like the- some house that might have a problem with solid waste, with trash or stuff, that will be line itemed and the time involved. But that's the only department we get that kind of report for.
Commissioners, may I make a suggestion that we tell these people what we want in a report so we get a standardized report back from them? I think Solid Waste should develop a set of criteria or items that they want placed into the report, such as whether it's detailed expenditures or travel, or how many times they went out into community. I think we need to tell them what we want so that we get a report that meets our needs. And I think we should have Mr. Billman draft it up and send it out to those departments. And then we should get the requisitions after we receive that documentation.
Now, that's why I asked what the re-
I don't think there's any standard. I think that these people are left to their own-
Okay, well, then you're suggesting they be developed.
And I suggest that Solid Waste send it out to the Health Departments and say, "This is what we want," and then they know what criteria. And obviously, Dan should talk to the three Commissioners and see what they would like to see in that report, and we wait for the reports to come back in. Waiting for them to send us a report and then saying, "We're not happy with that report" really just delays the process. Let's tell them what we want.
I think in Dan's behalf, I think this was done. You might want to check, but I think Andy, when Andy was here, he did send this out to the Health Departments. Check your files. You might see- find something in there. If not, then I would agree that we should.
I believe at one time I was told that what did send- they did send it out, but the response was not that good. But I can-
Commissioner Moore, you have a question?
No, I just wondered, can we just exempt this for now?
Well, Commissioner Vasey's asked to hold, and I was the mover of the motion, so I'll agree with the holding if that's agreeable with you. So will you call the rule on the other requisitions, please? Yes. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vasey?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vasey?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Ms. Vasey?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees within the jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners?
So moved.
I'll second, but I'd also like to request that we recess into an executive session in regards to a couple personnel issues. I'd like to discuss a director for 911, legal representation, and an employee's wages.
Ms. Blair?
I'm sorry.
Aye.
Ms. Vasey?
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Move the gentleman left.
Excuse me. Please take the vision for going into executive session.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure, are we voting on whether or not we're going into the executive session?
I don't believe so. My motion was to approve the personnel actions as indicated. I believe as a footnote, Commissioner Vasey requested an executive session.
So what's the vote for? Just the-
Item number 10, as it appears there.
Okay, so we're not voting on whether or not we're going to go into the executive session?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Aye.
Authorize county engineer to post load limit reduction signs on various county roads that state weight limits reduce 25% in accordance with Section 5577.07, the Ohio Revised Code, effective February 1st, 2001 through May 1st, 2001, for the thaw and moisture periods. Roads are listed in the resolution?
Also move.
I'll second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vasey?
Aye.
Authorize salary increase for Sue Danielson, Bailiff, Lorraine Municipal Court, effective retroactive to January 26, 2001. Biweekly rate will increase from $632.99 to $649.61 for longevity pay, and this reflects the county's 2/5 share.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vasey?
Aye.
Award contract to ally construction group. It should be North Homestead rather than Independence, Ohio, in the amount of $128,182, which includes alternates for the Lorraine County Children's Services Third Floor Administration Building restroom renovation project. This was the lowest and most responsive bid received complying with specifications. RWL Architects Incorporated has reviewed and recommends this award. The Commissioners have agreed to pay $50,000 towards this contract with the remaining $78,182 out of Children's Services Funds, and Children's Services Agency is in agreement with this award.
Also move.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vasey?
Aye.
Designate personnel exemptions for employees within the jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners Office pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 124.11A and 8, and the Ohio Administration Code Section 123.1502, as follows. Administrative Assistant Commissioner Mary Joveisi, Ministry of Assistant Commissioner David J. Moore, and Add Administrative Assistant Commissioner Betty Blair.
Also move.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vasey?
Aye.
Since we're turning the page, and it is 11 o'clock, I think we should move to the presentation by Dr. Painter from the Board of Mental Retardation Developmental Disabilities. Good morning, Dr. Painter.
Good morning. The Lorraine County Board of Mental Retardation and Developmental Disabilities provides educational, vocational, and residential services to approximately 1,700 mentally retarded and developmentally disabled children and adults from Lorraine County. The services are extensive but necessary for the growth, safety, and health of these vulnerable citizens of Lorraine County. Part of the need for the funding increase is to continue current services for the existing population and to provide these same services to the additional children and adults who will need them. The services which will realize the greatest increase are early intervention, which currently serves children from over 300 families and has grown by over 200% in the last five years, and it is expected to continue to grow during the next five years at the same rate. Community employment in adult supports has over 200 adults working on jobs and actually now in competitive employment and paying taxes in our county, and is expected to increase by 25% during the next five years. Case management now coordinates services for over 400 people but must increase service coordination to over 800 people to comply with new Medicaid regulations. And finally, residential services. Most specifically, we need to be responsive in the area of residential services. We have over 1,000 people on our waiting list for some type of residential service. Over 100 of them are living with elderly parents. They themselves are over 40 years old, so we can project how old their parents must Residential services has the greatest need, and it also brings with it the greatest responsibilities, both in care and in funding. Most of our mentally retarded and developmentally disabled adults need 24-hour-a-day care, and the new state initiative to access Medicaid funding for residential care requires an upfront 40% match. Finally, there is the need to keep up our infrastructure. We have some capital projects that we continue to need in order to keep up the public's investment in our facilities, such things as roof maintenance, vehicle replacement, sidewalk maintenance, masonry restoration, sewer and pavement projects. Those kinds of things are necessary. Therefore, I would like to ask your support on behalf of the mentally retarded and developmentally disabled individuals in the county for a five-year levy, which will be for 1.8 mils. And if you have any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Painter.
Thank you.
Commissioners, do we have questions regarding this issue?
Well, I just- I had several questions that I talked over with Dr. Painter yesterday, but I still feel, and I'm really still not convinced, that the original request from MRD in December was for $8.9 million. It was discovered that the additional levy of 1.8 milage, based on the reappraisal- It was discovered that the additional levy of 1.8 millage, based on the reappraisal, would generate $9.4 million, approximately $558,000 more than the original request was. I'm hoping that maybe we can go and review the certificate of millage and see if we can reduce that millage.
Well, the response, and I know we talked about this, that I'd like to give to that, is that we thought originally that we would be making this request before the end of the year. And at the time, we did not have the new valuation, so we only had what was existing, and the auditor was still working on the property valuations. So consequently, when our board asked for the 1.8 mils, which at the time of the old valuation was in that neighborhood that you mentioned, the intent always was that it would be raised, we knew, once we got the new property value figures. So that's the reason why when we were asking last, at the end of last year, we didn't have the ability to project how much that was going to be. But we did know it was going to be additional funds in the year 2001, and we did anticipate, based on what I explained in terms of the growth, that increase. So at this level, we really will not meet all the needs by any means.
But the levy that was on, this levy that we dropped, this is picking up that levy that was dropped a couple of years ago.
But it-
That was 1.5 mils.
Right.
And actually, it generated more revenue when you had a reserve of $25 million that MRDD has been kind of drawing on in the last three years. But that was a reserve from the 1.5 mil.
And the way that that works is that you have a buildup for five years of your costs, but your income level's off, so you have to carry over that reserve each year. And we said when we dropped that 1.5 mil levy that it would be a matter of three years, and we would have to ask for additional funds. And we knew it would be more than the 1.5 because of costs have gone up considerably.
Well, I just thought it was the-
And it would have been increased, if we would have kept that 1.5 mil levy through to this time, we would have had to increase it to 1.8 anyway. So we would have been at the same place that we are, only we knew that we couldn't keep that balance.
Well, I'm con-
And we have been especially conscientious, and the board has been especially careful in reviewing that. And the fact that, I think it's pretty unheard of to return a levy, we dropped a levy in 1998, and that's probably a very rare thing. And that's because we were able to go for three years without needing to tax the public. But we did say that we would be back in three years, and we knew that that's how long it would last. And we're exactly on target in terms of what we said at the time. And now, we have this huge need for residential services, which is an emergency. And state, what is happening is the state is backing out of the support of residential services, and the local county levies are to be the 40% match to draw down the 60% federal dollars. And as I say, with this levy, we cannot be able to begin to meet the needs of the people that we have on our waiting list. So it's a matter of saying if we would lower the millage of serving that many less people.
It's still, even with this higher millage, we're not going to serve all of them.
And still with this higher millage, we will not serve all of them. That is correct.
But at least it will be a beginning.
It will be a beginning. And the serious thing is really the 100 people, they become emergencies immediately when the last caregiver passes away or becomes ill as in the hospital, because these people themselves are, you know, in their 70s and 80s, and we have people all the time desperate to do something for their 40, 50, 60-year-old mentally retarded adult children.
The deadline for filing an issue on the ballot is February 22nd. Are there any further questions or comments regarding this request from the Board of Mental Retardation and Developmental Disabilities? I would move that we approve the request to place this levy on the ballot.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Is there any further discussion?
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Pena.
Thank you.
We have five minutes. Teresa, what can we do in five minutes? Starting with number 15.
Authorize the extension of time to Lad Trucking Incorporated, Lary, Ohio, from November 30, 2000 to January 18, 2001, for completion of the demolition of 6082 Lary Avenue. Due to the inclement weather, they could not start and finish the demolition within the specific time. The backfill and compaction have been completed, and project has been completed in its entirety.
Also moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Issue notice to proceed letter effective January 22, 2001, to R.A. Joseph Construction Company, Avon, Ohio, for the Spring Street 2000 Shelter Addition Parks and Recreational Facilities in Overland, Ohio, a CDBG-FY99-funded project. This contract was awarded by Resolution 00892, adopted November 16, 2000.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Approve the sale of the following county-owned parcels to Amherst Township for the sum of $10. 0500045000078, .25 acres. The last three, 008 for 1.79 acres, 082 for 4.66 acres, and 043, that's a correction of 1.96 acres. The county acquired this land from the state as surplus land after the state completed a bridge and road project on Middle Ridge Road. The county no longer has particular use for this property. Sale of property is to stipulate that the land is only to be used for public purpose by the township. County is to be granted complete and full access to the property necessary to conduct repairs to the roads, and the county engineer shall maintain the right of way. Should these terms and conditions not be honored, property will revert back to the county's control.
Are there questions regarding this issue? If not, also moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Approve and enter into a lease agreement between the Board of Commissioners and Arthur H., excuse me, Arthur H. Clark, for office space utilized by the county coroner, effective retroactive to January 1, 2001, expiring December 31, 2004. The rent is in the amount of $1,000 per month during the first and second year of the lease, and years three and four shall be increased to $1,100 per month, and lease contains a 90-day written cancellation clause.
Are there questions regarding this item? Also moved.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Number 19 has asked to be held per prosecutor, Mr. Flanagan, stating that he hasn't heard from the Ohio Attorney General's Office. Okay.
Mr. Ennis, is there a, I was told that he did speak to him.
He did originally, there you go.
He did originally have some contact with the Attorney General's Office. Whoever he spoke with, I think, wanted to consult further with their supervisor, and we were waiting to hear back from that second phone call.
So as of this morning, he hadn't heard from them. Because I got hit about two minutes before the meeting, that's what was going on. So I found, I was confused, because he did say he'd spoken, they thought they would have no problem, so.
And that's what we've received so far, but again, whoever he spoke with wanted to double-check with somebody higher up.
So can we add this to the-
Yeah, I think he's just saying just about that one week, and hopefully we'll have heard from him.
Okay.
Do we table it, or do we just, that's all?
Authorized Lorain County Community Development Department to seek an extension for the completion date of its current CDBGED infrastructure grant, BE990431, for visual projects from the Ohio Office of Housing and Community Partnerships. This extension is being recognized until December 31, 2001, to allow completion of the site restoration and machinery, equipment, and fixture fixtures, furniture fixtures. Extension is being requested due to weather-related issues, specifically final grading and seating that will take place in spring, and authorize the president to execute on behalf of the board.
Any questions? If not, also moved.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Award bid to Vance Shooting Supply, Columbus, Ohio, on the amount of $50,559.40 for the purchase of weapons for the Lorain County Sheriff's Department, which includes trade-ins. Two bids were received, but standard law enforcement supply did not bid on the total package.
Questions? If not, also moved.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Authorize the appointment of Tom Orlando as member on Lorain County Alcohol and Drug Addiction Services Board, 317, to fill the unexpired term of Judith Trelick, who has resigned. Term is effective January 18, 2001, expiring June 30, 2003.
Questions?
Second.
No questions.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Authorize the expansion of Lorain County Regional Airport Authority Board by two members until December 34, 2003. The board will be reduced to seven members upon the expiration of the current terms of Joseph Monia and James Zangali. New appointments are authorized for Leonard J. Secor and Dan Gross, effective January 18, 2001, expiring January 17, 2004.
I would like a little discussion on this before we proceed with the motion. I don't know if I'd like to take credit or not for the concept of expanding this board by two members. I am not in favor of expanding the board by two members and then limiting the current terms of Joseph Monia and James Zangali. And I would like to throw another thought into the process, just for discussion purposes. I've talked to several people about the possibility of expanding this board, and whether it's good, bad, or indifferent, depends on who you talk to.
Yep.
But one party suggested to me that instead of expanding the board to seven, that we have alternates, such as Lorain County Transit has, where they have specified alternates, and those alternates come to all the meetings, they receive, as I understand, they receive all the paperwork from the members, and, but the only time they are voting members is when one of the regular appointed members is not present. And when vacancies occur as the board continues on, then the alternates are available for appointment to the full board. And that's not something that was discussed, and I would like to throw that out for the, into the mix for discussion purposes. And I also would like to thank Commissioner Moore for providing the bios for his recommended people, both Leonard Secora and Dan Gross. And then I have one, and, good, I would like them to stand. And then I have one further question. If in fact, we do proceed to expand the board, I do not believe that they should have the terms as stipulated here. I believe that the terms should expire on December 31 of whatever year, so that we have a continuity. And I think they should be either one or two years, or two or three years, and staggered just as the original appointments were. So that's my-
That's your discussion.
That's my discussion for this morning.
Well, my apologies. I didn't intend to have the names put in there. What I was trying to do was exactly what you said, was to time the appointments with the final two members. And so I'd prefer to have the dates in there and not the names in the resolution. I didn't intend that to happen, so my apologies to Mr. Monia and Mr. Zangali.
But in effect, that is what will happen.
Well, maybe, maybe not, I don't know.
Oh, no, I don't think so.
I don't know. You know, there'll be appointments between now and the next four years for the whole board. So that's how, I mean, my main thing was just adding two more members, and I'm not big on big boards, and that's why I added the, I guess, the line in there to bring it back down to seven, so.
Well, I would agree, you know, if that's your desire to add the two more members, I would go along with that, but the expiration is what bothers me to-
Would you rather have it nine?
To, well, to expire two people, I think we can make that decision when their term is due.
Right. That's what I was looking at, you'll have four people, four board members, and there'll be two seats, and at that time, we can decide which four will have those two seats.
Exactly.
That's how I intended to do it now. How do you write it in a resolution?
Well, I think what we're doing is just adding two members.
Right, for the next four years.
And then leaving it open, and then four years from now, or whenever these terms, as they come up, no matter whose they are, whether they're-
Could be this year.
These two members or others. Then we make a decision as to whether or not we want to keep those people on board.
I don't like that concept. I think it singles out somebody to say that you will only serve until such a time, and the two members that you have suggested are not in this mix, if the timeframe is 2004, as you have suggested.
Right.
And I'm not in favor of that. I think that we should, if in fact, and I want to again point out that this was my suggestion to begin with.
Right.
If we want to increase the board, and I think we should do that, so that you will have some say in who the board members are. But I don't think that in this process, we should then exclude the board members who are already there when their term is over. And I think that that's in effect what we are doing.
I think that's what we're talking about doing, just adding two members. And then, no matter, well, no matter what board it is, when their term is up, I mean, we make a decision whether or not we're going to reappoint. And I think that's the same thing we're doing here, we're just adding two members.
So if you guys want, I don't mind, well, I don't mind dropping this, so the only thing that was in here was going from nine to seven, or from seven to nine to seven, and if it's okay, then we can drop the, we can leave it at nine, and I don't have a problem with that.
And make a decision as the terms-
Exactly, make a decision as the terms go.
On each of the individuals.
Correct.
Then may I ask that we consider an expiration date of 12/31 for each of these positions? And since we staggered the positions the last time, I think that these should be staggered also. I think one should be for two years, and one should be for three years, whatever that-
That's fine.
Is that all right?
That's fine with me.
Okay.
Do you have a preference, Commissioner Moore?
Yes, I'll go with Leonard Secora for the two-year, and Dan Gross, who was here today for the three-year.
Is he still here?
Yep.
Dan, would you please stand up? Thank you.
Excuse me, may I ask some question before you go to a vote, if your discussion is completed?
Briefly, because we've got 11:15.
I'm aware of that.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
One, can you tell me, just for information, whose term expires when of the present board?
Yes, I can. George Andrews' term expires at the end of this year, as well as Worrell-Sukie. In 2002, Dan Jarvin's term expires, as does Alan Zaleski's and Philip Schwens. And in '03, Joseph Monia and James Zangali. And if you would like a list, I could give that to you afterwards, rather than your-
That's fine, thank you. Then I would also, and this will sound terribly naive, I'm sure, but I have been hearing, as has been reported, and this is quite legitimate, that this is Ross's appointee, or Blair's appointee, or Fosse's appointee, or Moore's appointee. And it's, of course, necessary that somebody choose these people and that it be shared among them. But I would hope that when these people get on the board, they are not working for you, or you, or you, but they are working for Lorain County and the appropriate place of the airport in the development of the county. And as I say, this sounds terribly naive, but every once in a while, maybe something like that needs to be brought out again into the public and so forth. And just as an addendum, I think the idea of alternates is an excellent one.
Thank you, Elizabeth. And I think that you're entirely right. While we might recommend people for appointment, once they're appointed to the board, they become the representatives of the county, and I think that's a very valid point to make.
You want to try to read that motion, or that resolution out?
Authorize the expansion of Lorain County Regional Airport by two members.
The appointment would be Leonard J. Secor for two years, and Dan Gross for three years, effective January eighteen, two thousand and one.
That's it.
And that whatever the term, they will expire at, in December, as opposed to a January expiration.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Facey.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Thank you.
We need to have our community development block grant.
At public hearing, and that's what they're referred to, at that point, we had identified to the public and to the Board of Commissioners which projects Lorraine County was submitting to the Department of Development for possible funding. In October of nineteen ninety-nine, we received word that our projects were in fact funded, a total county allocation, which includes the five small cities and county funds, for a total of four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. That work was to be completed during the calendar year of two thousand. Extensions quite often are permitted by the State Department, or the State Department of Development, and certainly Lorraine County has been very familiar with getting extensions on these projects. It's common that these are two-year projects before a complete funding year is completed. In fact, we have secured an extension for fiscal year nineteen ninety-nine, and at the present time, all work is to be completed prior to June thirtieth of nineteen, or of two thousand and one. What we have in front of us today, we have spent about three hundred thousand of the three hundred and twenty thousand allocation. We have a few projects that are currently under projects, are under construction, that have not been completed, and we have at least one project, that being the project in the city of Avon, that we have received a letter from the designee of the Mayor of the City of Avon. This letter was dated eleven twenty-one, indicating basically that the City of Avon had planned to put in a handicap chairlift in their City Hall to make office space available to the handicapped individuals on the lower level or the basement. That work was cost prohibitive primarily because the size of the chairlift and the space, as we understand, that was going to be available to install a chairlift, would not accommodate motorized wheelchairs. So the city then started looking at alternatives during last year. They also explored, as one of the alternatives, putting in a cost of an elevator, that was going to be about a hundred and twenty thousand. They looked at a handicap ramp. They would have to add on to the building in order to have space, in order to get the proper slope and grade to that ramp. Presently, it's my understanding that the city itself is exploring the option of buying additional land in their city to explore the possibility of a new location for City Hall, which will accommodate all able-bodied and disabled citizens. At this point, again, on November twenty-first, we have received a letter from Jerry Plasse, the Service Director, the designated agent for Mayor Jim Smith, indicating that they wish not to proceed with this project at this point, and have further indicated they're releasing their funds so that the county can assess those to another project. One of the conditions that we have with the Department of Development, we have to replace similar projects with similar projects. This was a removal of architectural barrier project in a city. We have talked and gotten permission from the Department of Development to use the allocation for a small city to a township project as long as it's still a removal of architectural barrier project. In this particular case, we are suggesting to the public and to get their comment today, and then we'll be suggesting further to the Board of Commissioners, that in fact, Activity Number Four, City of Avon, calling for the removal of architectural barriers with a budget of seventeen thousand, nine hundred dollars, be deleted from the grant agreement with the Department of Development, State of Ohio, and Lorraine County, and that we ask for a new activity, or, I'm sorry, amendment to an existing Activity Number Six, known as Eaton Township, also a removal of architectural barrier project. And this additional seventeen thousand, nine hundred, when added to the present forty thousand, nine hundred dollars, will give a new amended dollar amount from this grant to Eaton Township of fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. We have bid the Eaton project on two occasions to get a elevator installed in Eaton Township. The lowest bid for that project in Eaton Township has been just slightly less than sixty-two thousand dollars. The township will cover the difference between CDBG funds that are available and the bid cost. Our request is to make available through this amendment for Eaton Township fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars, knowing that the project will come in greater than that, but the township will cover the additional money. At this point, I have to inform the Commissioners and the public that on January eighth, we did in fact ask that a public announcement be placed in the two major newspapers. That was on, or in the papers on January eighth, informing the public of this amendment request. And then today, we are to hold this public hearing and to accept any comments or questions relating to this amendment request. And at this point, I open it up for any questions either by the Board of Commissioners or the public.
Does the Board have any questions, Mr. Twining? Are there any questions from the public regarding this matter? If not, then it's appropriate for us to make a motion to approve. I will so move.
Second discussion. Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Facey.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Thank you, Ron.
If I may, I would just like to inform the public and the Commissioners that we will then, on the strength of this, submit a letter to the Department of Development. Within probably two to three weeks, we will receive the actual grant amendment from the state, and that will again need to come before the Board of Commissioners to authorize the President to sign on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, and then it will become available.
Thank you.
Mr. Portes, can I, Minister?
I have nothing today, thank you.
Mr. NS.
I have no report this morning.
President's report, Ms. Blair.
I have two items I would like to share with the Board and the public. This, a week ago, I attended the Workforce Investment Board meeting, and Jan Rabarsik, who is the Director of the Job Network, made a presentation to the Board, and she supplied this transition plan for Nordson employees. And I attended the local eighteen oh-two Nordson Employee Union meeting on Sunday, and there was a great discussion about the number of employees at Nordson who are losing their employment because of this change in the economy. And they are specifically interested in this employment fair that's going to be held on Wednesday, January thirty-first, and I have copies for the news media as well, to get the message out that the Job Network is trying to do their job of bringing employers and employees together, and I think that they're doing a very good job. So I wanted to share that with both the public and my fellow Board members. And the other thing I would like to comment on, Elizabeth has asked me to do this, and I think was an excellent comment. Andrea Misko is here from the Chronicle Telegram, and as we all know, Andrea is getting a different assignment. She's still going to be at the Chronicle, but she's going to be covering the City of Aluria instead of us, and I think we're all going to miss her because she's been an excellent reporter. So Andrea, just stand up and take a bow. And then perhaps you'd like to introduce your replacement.
This is Kristen Yarborough, she's going to be the new county reporter, and she's been covering Avon, Avon Lake, Chapel Lake, Chapel Delight. She's been quite busy. Yeah, she's going to cover.
Welcome. And that concludes my report.
What was that date?
The job fair?
Yes.
It's on the back. It's January thirty.
Oh, it's on the back?
I'm sorry. It's January thirty-first, Wednesday, from one-thirty to five-thirty PM at Rosewood Place, four-four-nine-three Oberlin Avenue, and the goal is to provide a forum where employees have an opportunity to meet and interact with various manufacturing employers to explore job openings. And the content is area employers will share job opportunities that exist within their companies and accept resumes, applications from potential employees.
Commissioners report? Ms. Blair.
I'm done.
I don't have a report this morning, but I would like to request an executive session regarding legal representation and employee's wage, and also the hiring of an employee.
Legal rep.
Pardon me?
Legal representation?
Yes. Legal representation and employee's wages, and the hiring of an employee.
Aren't we going to have an executive session on Tuesday? Can this wait?
Well, I thought it would just be very short.
Well, to answer your question, we are having an executive session on Tuesday.
No, excuse me.
But that's separate from.
No, we don't have an executive session scheduled for Tuesday.
No, we do not.
Because the Solid Waste Advisory Policy Board meeting is at ten, and so unless we want to schedule one for nine, which we can do, we had not scheduled one for Tuesday.
So I'd prefer to do that with an agenda before.
Okay, we could do it. Is Tuesday all right with you at nine o'clock?
It's fine.
Tuesday at nine?
Yeah, I do, I do want to be, yes, I do want to be at the ten o'clock Solid Waste Policy Advisory Board meeting.
Twenty-third.
Okay, will that be agreeable then?
It's applicable.
Okay.
Mr. Moore, did you have anything?
Nope. Not today.
Old business?
I have none.
I have none.
Mr. Moore.
What's the definition of old business?
Yesterday.
Yesterday?
Anything you want.
Okay. Let's see, is Virgil still here?
Yes, Mr. Muntin is in the back.
Can I speak to him? Can you come out? We're, are we, I don't see it's in the comments here, but we're going to a meeting, or are we meeting after the meeting to go to J.C. Penney's building? Is that what we're doing?
Yes, Virgil wasn't involved with that. That'll be the three Commissioners, there'll be, there's a sedan waiting downstairs for you after the meeting, they'll take you over.
Oh, sedan?
No, not sedan, it's that, he asked that, he said van, didn't you?
I said sedan.
You'd excuse me. You did, really?
Yes, I did. And the three Commissioners will be taken over to take a walk through the J.C. Penney Building. There'll be some, the maintenance supervisor will be over there to walk around with you, and I'll probably follow along afterwards.
Okay. Regarding the, and what time is that?
Upon completion of the meeting, Commissioner.
Okay. In regards, were you involved in the purchase of that building? Or who was involved in that?
Virgil Muntin, M-U-N-T-E-A-N, yes, I was, I handled the purchase of the building.
Okay. And when, we purchased it on December fourteenth, I believe.
Correct.
And then, how long were the negotiations on that?
The negotiations, probably over a period of thirty, forty-five days.
And who were you negotiating with in the purchase of that?
Larry Jones, the owner of Erie Shores Computer, Inc.
Okay, because it showed that the company purchased that. Okay. So you were only looking for, how long were you looking for that property? How long were you shopping to? Was it something that came up, or?
It was something that became available after we, the county purchased the train station.
And when was the train station purchased? I'm trying to get a timeline here.
Train station was purchased, I would say roughly September.
It was purchased in September?
Somewhere around that timeframe, September, possibly October.
For, I think, what, two fifty? No.
I believe it was about two hundred and fifty.
About two hundred and fifty thousand? Okay. And my concern was that, was, you know, well, there's a lot, I got an information on the file, and there's some things missing in the file, and that's why when the purchase went down, it doesn't, the file I have a concern with, and maybe, maybe there is no problem here, so maybe I'll take a look at the building today. And how many square feet was in the building, in the J.C. Penney?
I don't recall offhand right now.
So what was the purpose of the purchase of the J.C. Penney's building?
The purchase was, after the county purchased the train station, to find some land available to the train station for possibility of a transportation center for buses, taxis, parking, and so forth. That area right around there is kind of an urban renewal area, with Fifth Third renovating the old post office, and the new library, purchasing all the property to the east up to Cedar Street. That will all be demolished, and there'll be a new library built on that site. And then with the renovation of the old train station, that would pretty well encompass everything in that block, and there's not adequate parking at the current time.
Do you know if Mr. Jones had an option to purchase that property, or was it just a direct purchase for him?
Mr. Jones had, was, apparently had a lease with an option to purchase.
Well, he did have a lease with an option?
Right.
Okay, that answers my question right there, then. Do you know how long that lease was?
No, I, no, I don't. That was, you know, confidential information between him and the prior owner. However, both parcels were purchased within the appraised value.
No, I'm aware of that, just, I had some clients come up to me and give me information, and I was concerned about the December purchase date of Erie Shores and the December fourteenth purchase date of the county, and the difference of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
But if there was a lease option, that might clear up what, what might look as something that might not be right, but it sounds like to me that.
Right.
If there's a lease option, because if you're negotiating forty-five days before, and he's only on the property for two, two weeks, I had a concern. But if he had a purchase option, and maybe that option was a year, then maybe the hundred and fifty thousand dollar appreciation could be justified.
I believe he occupied the building maybe for close to a year for some storage of some equipment.
Okay. Those are the, those are just, that was the only unanswered question that I had, so I appreciate you.
His possession of that property was based on a lease with an option to purchase.
Okay. Thank you, Virg.
Sure.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
That was, I guess that's old business. Thanks.
Okay. Just the one that's noted, sanitary engineers report regarding the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer Agreement with Columbia Township. Report was due on January twenty-fifth, two thousand and one.
Jack Januzzi from the sanitary engineer's office is here, and I believe he has some information to share with the Board.
Good evening. Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. Jack.
Jack Januzzi, Lorraine County Sanitary Engineers Office, J.A.N.N.U.C.Z.I. I really don't have a whole lot more information than I told you last time on the eighth, when I was here. I did meet with Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District yesterday morning, and went through a lot of, actually Rick Satulsky over there, he's an engineer. He had a lot of maps and things to look at, and I looked through a lot of old studies and things that were done in the eighties, when they were in the designing process of the east leg, the southwest sewer system. And what I came up with was, just looking through a lot of books and trying to narrow down to Columbia Township and how that fit into their plan. Now, it was, it was, at the time, called an optional area, a service area, and they called it an optional area for their sewer system. There is one, I have one small part of the township definitely was inside their service area, and that was just the northeast corner of the township where our county-owned wastewater treatment plan is. The rest of the entire township was called an optional area, and we could, we were, you know, we could serve all or parts of the township by going to them at any time and asking them for a service area, or sewer service. So we also had a conversation with the WACA yesterday afternoon, and Andy Vidra over there. And Columbia Township is unique to the rest of the county, whereas it's geographically closer to Cuyahoga County than it is the rest of Lorraine County, because it's in a different watershed. So naturally, the gravity, sewers would go east rather than west. So it is in their optional planning area. They had four optional planning areas when they designed that sewer system, and we'd have to, the county would have to request service area from them, and we would have to construct sewers when the time came to do that, we, you know, they would have to, they don't seem, they seem to be easier, easy to work with, I think we could work with Northeast Regional Sewer District. They seemed pretty receptive. And I didn't get a chance to talk to Howard Pugh. He would be the guy to talk to about specific sewer service areas. Any questions?
Jack, did you get a copy of the fax that came from Nowaka yesterday?
No, I didn't.
We attempted to fax it to your office, and apparently you closed your office and shut down the fax machine. Tell them to leave the fax machine on, so we can send this stuff. Jack came to my office yesterday, and Roxanne Blair, and we called Andy Vidra because of the seeming contradiction about who should be servicing this area, and I believe this was shared with the Commissioners late yesterday, you might not have had a chance to read it. But I would like to read it, because Dale Rundel is here from Columbia Township, and I think this is important to the question that's been raised. It says, "The Clean Water Two Thousand Plan recognizes that all of Columbia Township is included in the southerly facility planning area. This is clearly shown in Figure Four, which is attached." This means that the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District is willing to discuss the extension, the san- extension of sanitary sewer lines from the southwest interceptor into the township. Neo-Sword will work with the Lorain County Commissioners to develop mutually acceptable sewer plans with the support of the Columbia Township trustees. It is our understanding that the commissioners can elect to exclude sanitary sewers in any portion of the township. The commissioners can also elect to remove any portion of the township from the southerly FPA and reassign it elsewhere. The development of sewer plans in Columbia Township remains the responsibility of the Lorain County Commissioners. Northeast has stated its willingness to entertain any requests from the commissioners to provide support for the results of that planning. Only Northeast District can supply sanitary service to the township at this time. Any other option would require the joint consent of the Lorain County Commissioners and the Northeast District. I hope that this clarifies the commissioner's role in sewer planning within Columbia Township. Please contact me if you have any further questions or if you need more information." And I will make available copies of this for you and for Dale after the meeting.
Thank you.
Now, what actually does this mean? Does this mean to get the sewers to the northeast region, that the county would have to pay for, to put the lines in and stuff?
Well, that was my understanding initially, that they would allow us, there's two big connections. They have two big interceptor sewers, one on the Sprague Road and Marks Road, right at the northeast corner of Columbia Township and the county, and another one on Usher Road, which isn't too far away. I was under the impression at one time that the county would have to build sewers within the township to get to those two connecting points, but it sounds like, from this letter, that they are willing to extend sewers in, out of Cuyahoga County into Lorain County. Is that, the way that reads? Ready?
I'm not sure about that particular aspect of it.
At least that, that's what it sounds like. But I was under the impression before that we would have to construct sewers, and they would only avail us to a connect, to the connecting points.
I think all that they're going to provide, Jerry, help me out if you know, is the receipt of the sewage, and that I think the construction of any lines would be incumbent upon us to do that.
Yes, I mean, we have the, we are under the 6117, and we have to construct, they're just going to provide us with a outlet to go to.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, according to this.
That's my, that's my understanding, although I haven't spoken with them recently.
That's what this sounds like, too, Jerry. It sounds, it says, "The development of sewer plans in Columbia Township remains the responsibility of Lorain County Commissioners."
Okay, there was something in there about Northeast extending the sewers, but that's, you're right, there, we have to construct the sewers.
Well, my concern is how this will affect the annexation, and timing between this and the request for the annexation. This'll never get done in time, to reject the annexation in regards to sewers.
Dale Rundle would like to speak, Columbia Township trustee.
Are you in D-L-E? We had a meeting with Strongsville Tuesday night. At that time, they passed a resolution to accept all the sewage and the annexation of that 53 acres into Strongsville. The catch is, their hearing date here is January 25th. They will not be able to accept that, because they did not go under an emergency, they didn't have the votes for the emergency passage of the resolution.
Correct.
So it will not be available until the 15th of February. That's where we're sitting on the annexation problem right now. They still will be coming to you. They did not address the water problem, the storm sewage, which was not addressed, or the 6119 with rural water was not addressed. Those are two main things that we have. Now, we do have other options as far as the sewers. We could go to LARCO. I know a lot of people don't like, LARCO, they haven't been started, they haven't had a background yet, so people don't know about how it's supposed to be. But I do know a little bit about it, since I was on the board and started it. And after that, Columbia opted to drop out, they repaid our $5,000, and we were out. We could pay the $5,000 and be back in. And we had LARCO come out to our meeting. We've, since then, since the last meeting, we've checked into that. And what Jack said about Northeast is the same thing that we've been getting. Mr. Bogren's been working on that for, well, we passed our resolution in July to take it to the county engineers, or town, county commissioners, to see if we could get into the sewer district since last July. We have yet to get anything done. So in December, it was the 28th, is when I called Mrs. Bassey and asked her if we could get on the agenda to see if we could try to get this in. This is the main reason we're in a stalemate for time right now. We, we know we're, we're in a bind. I don't know, I've been told by LARCO that they could help us out. If we would join them, we could probably become part of the sewer district or whatever. We could help the annexation. This, I do not know for a fact. That's one reason I'm coming to you, because you're the board that I kind of look up to, to give us the guidance that we need in the townships. And that's the main reason for the whole problem, because I know the annexation problem's coming to you this month.
And at the last meeting, we did authorize the engineer's office, the sanitary engineer's office, to work on this project. Is that not correct?
That's what I thought.
I thought we included LARCO in that, and I, we've got, we received a letter from Fred, and this morning I talked with Fred Ospah.
Okay.
And I guess Gene Bilgram mentioned at the trustees' meeting, that the commissioners were interested in selling the plants or turning them over to the Northeast District. I don't recall any of that, but if they were going to be turned over to anyone, in my opinion, it would be LARCO, not, not Northeast District. Personally, how I feel about LARCO, I would like to turn all the sewer issues over to them. They focus on just sewers, just like the rural water focuses just on water. We have so many issues on the plate, that I'm afraid, just like you said, some of these get stalemated, and they're just held back, and, and I would like to see Fred involved in these meetings. And I thought that, and Fred also thought, because he attended the last meeting, that he was going to be invited to the meetings. And he told me this morning that he didn't attend any of the meetings, he wasn't invited, and I don't know why. But he also talked about LARCO being interested in those plants. And if that's the case, I'd like to start moving on whatever it is we can do to turn those plants over to LARCO.
Well, I'm not sure I share your enthusiasm for divesting the county's interest in this, what I think is a public purpose and part of what we're supposed to be about. I would like to comment that, and I spoke to Jerry Innis yesterday, after I spoke to Andy Vidra, because I wanted to make sure that I was on solid ground with this information that was being presented today. And if Columbia Township does not join LARCO, the county is in charge of that area, and we can work with the Columbia Township trustees. So whether or not LARCO is involved, that's up to the Columbia Township trustees, that's not up to us. Is that correct, Jerry?
Right. Columbia has, at the present time, opted not to join LARCO.
Okay, so that, that's a decision?
That is their decision.
That the Columbia Township trustees have made? And so, we're having a hearing next week, and I would encourage the engineer's office to continue to work on this subject, because it's going to be a subject of the discussion and the information that will be presented to us next week.
And I think I indicated last week, you know, Columbia Township doesn't need our permission to, to meet and discuss with LARCO. If they choose to do that, they certainly are free to make that decision on their own.
Okay.
Right, but the main thing is, Mr. Blair, we just wanted to know your opinion on it, too. We don't want to come around the back door. We want to come in the front door with the commissioners, doing things the way they want, and we want for the betterment of our people and the people in your county.
Well, and I respect that, Dale, but I think that, from my perspective, we're working in conjunction with the trustees. And the trustees have decided not, have previously decided not to be a part of LARCO. So we're working with you. I mean, I think that's what we're attempting to do. Whatever you do after this date, we'll continue to work with you.
Okay.
But I think that it's important for us to have some kind of a game plan, so to speak, because this is going to be a very contentious issue for Columbia Township with respect to that annexation. Commissioner Moore was not in office last year when the issue was first brought to the forefront, and I think that, postage's gone up, too, so maybe we won't get as many letters, but really, the Columbia Township residents were very, very vocal in not being in favor of this annexation. So we have to-
Two thousand from Columbia and seventy-five from Strongsville.
Okay. So I think we have to find some kind of a balance where we can, you know, property owners have certain rights, and I think we have to see if we can't assist them in developing their property where they are, and this would be a good mechanism for them to do that. So, you know, we have to give them something. We can't just say no.
The main reason one of the gentlemen on the city council changed his mind was in anticipation of them giving him 240 acres of commercial property after this annexation. To me, it was not addressed as the 53 acres. He was going with 270-some acres.
Additional?
And to me, that was-
Additional acres?
That's affirmative. And that's the golf course across from Gloria's place there. You know where that is.
Yes.
So what you're in fact saying is that they're going to come back for another 250 acres?
They're going to keep coming back.
And then they're going south, and they're going to come back for another 400 acres. And then Umston Falls, who's already put it on their table, is coming for a long Sprague Road, all the way over towards Ishville, so.
Well, can I say something?
Sure.
Because I've been quiet. I don't like to be quiet. I have heard LARCO's presentation, and hearing their presentation, I would say that it sounds something, like something I'd probably agree with, but I have not heard the opposing view. And I would like to know publicly right now, who could I maybe talk to, to get an opposing view on why LARCO should not participate in the sewers? I mean, they have a game plan in place, I don't know how valid that is, and I would like to hear an opposing view, and privately, not in a public forum, but have me one-on-one sit down with somebody and say, okay, why should we not support LARCO in this endeavor? Whether they can afford it, whether they can't, I'd like to hear an opposing view. And who would that, who would you recommend?
I'll tell you the truth, sir. That's one of the reasons I'm here. I would like to find out who this person or persons are. I do not know. I, I've had a lot of-
The trustees are the ones that voted against participating in LARCO, so you're-
The reason they voted at that time was because, this was back in seventy, or ninety-six, okay? After LARCO was started, then I believe ninety-seven, they opted out. And that, the reason was, is because there's been lawsuits and everything. LARCO's changed since then. And that's why I asked Mr. Fred to come out to our meeting Monday night, to give us an update. Because two of the trustees voted not to even have updates from LARCO for the last three years.
And did he attend?
Me, this is asinine.
Did he attend?
You have to know what you're-
Did he attend, or no?
Did he stay?
Yes, he did attend.
Okay.
And the people were very susceptible to it. They told a couple of the trustees to, was not 1930 anymore, they should come back to year 2000, but we won't go into that.
See, I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to figure out. It sounds like there's issues at the trustee, and you guys have decided not to.
I don't think it's just one trustee, though.
No, no, I don't know who it is, but I'm just saying, you guys voted out of LARCO, and now we have a sewer issue.
And they voted out of LARCO because of the strong opposition to the residents in Columbia Township at that time, because Columbia Township had public hearings, and they had how many unders, Gamedale?
There was a couple hundred in there. And the people that they let speak were the ones that did not own land in Columbia, and were already in sewered areas where they rented, but we won't go into that.
You mean they didn't let anybody else talk?
They let, they let people from EPA talk, and they would not listen to them.
Oh, well.
The EPA told them that they were going to redo their sewers in that area one of these days, because they were going to be mandated to do it, because we had a 47% fail rating in Columbia and Lorain County at that time. And it's probably gone up since then.
Well, I guess my point was that somebody just didn't say no, that there was, there was some reasoning, good, bad, or indifferent, as to why they opted out at that point in time.
Okay.
So there's, there's two avenues that can be traveled, and whichever is the better one needs to be decided by the Columbia Township Board of Trustees.
Correct. This is, I would think would be at the trustees.
It will be decided next meeting.
So you guys are in the process of deciding, it's a decision for them, and-
And in the meantime, I think we should work with them. They've requested us to do that.
With LARCO being involved, and I have a problem if they're not being called. I, and if Fred's not getting the calls, then-
I can understand it.
I told you, I mean-
Well-
I'm just saying, if he's at-
But I have the same problem you do. I have the same problem Mr. Moore does. I don't know the opposition to LARCO, I don't understand it. I mean, if the county can do it, okay, but I didn't know the county really wanted to put in more monies into sewers if they didn't have to. They, they've got a lot of other projects they could work on quite visibly.
So really, there's nothing for a week, right?
No, but I think the main issue here is, how do we prevent, if in fact, the board needs to have a reason to reject an annexation request? That's what this whole issue is about.
That's affirmative, ma'am.
The only way we're going to be able to do that is help them, in any way we can, whether it be LARCO, or the county, or however, let's get it done.
Okay.
Or we have to go on, certainly, again.
Madam Clerk, where are we now? Thank you, Dale.
We are in our pending issues, anything?
No. I have none.
Mr. Moore?
No.
New business, Ms. Blair?
I have one item here. The administrator gave this to me. It's addressed, it's from Tom Kelly, regarding matching grant received from the Ohio Emergency Management Agency. It says, "One of the long-term goals of this office was to establish a radio communication system that can be utilized on a day-to-day basis, that has coverage for the entire county, and that could function independently should there be a catastrophic failure or loss of the emergency operations center located in the basement of the current EMA facility. The solution was to purchase a repeater system that has been installed on a radio tower located on Murray Ridge Road in Loriot Township. It only provides superior mobile and handheld portable radio coverage over the entire county, but allows us the ability to still have an operational radio system should the unthinkable happen here in our office. The system operates completely independent of their office system, and it was purchased for $6,932.98. And at the time, they applied for a 50% matching grant that was available, and they are happy to report that they received the grant, and have received a check from the state in the amount of $3,466.49, half of the system." So, we want to-
Is that part of that other grant they got for 6,000-something, or is the something separate?
No, Commissioner, that's a, this is a completely different grant from the 6,000 they received from the state. And they're also meeting with, I think it's Western Southern Life, this week, to see if we can get some grant money to help assist us with the construction of our new EMA facility. They have a grant program where funds can be accessed for, the area will have under EMA for our disaster room and the equipment down there. So Tom's actively seeking out grant money. It's not a lot of money, but every dollar helps.
This is grant, a grant for brick and mortar?
It can be for brick and mortar, it can be for equipment. We'll know more if Mr. Kelly meets with them later this week.
I think he should inform Virge, too. Virge and John.
We're making a grant application, he's just meeting to talk with them at this point, so there's, we don't know, there's, I don't believe there's any matching dollars involved, and as far as meeting with Virge on brick and mortar, we would be getting a dollar grant that would be used to help fund that program, so I don't know there's any involvement necessary at this time.
Okay. Let John know what's going on, yeah?
Certainly.
Madam Clerk?
Just what's noted, Lorain County Solid Waste Management District policy will conduct their organizational meeting on Tuesday, January 23, 2001, at 10:00 a.m. in the public hearing room.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment? I see no takers today. News media, any comment, questions? Thank you. I move the board correspondence reading be waived.
Second discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Having concluded our identified items, I move we adjourn.
Second discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.